I am calling this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees to order. We will begin with our safety message, invocation, and pledge of allegiance from Ms. Lori Lopez.
All right, I'll start over. Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. I'll review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot at the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we wanted to ensure we were all prepared. Additionally, we ask that you remain seated during the duration of the meeting, keep the aisles clear, and do not block any exits. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of the customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Great. Now, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And now we will move to public comment.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group that they represent, and the agenda item that they will speak about. We ask that you remain seated until you hear your name called. Additionally, if you have items you would like to share with the Board of Trustees, please provide those to Board Relations, and we will happily share them with the Board post-meeting on your behalf. For this meeting, we have 15 in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. At the conclusion of the two minutes, the screen will flash red, and you will be asked to stop speaking immediately. Please be respectful of this time allocation. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Patricia Major.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. One thing I saw this morning, I was driving on Gilbo. I saw maybe 10 or more CPS trucks putting new poles. And that gives me the opportunity, but I was driving, going to eat my taco with my granddaughter to celebrate my birthday today, and it's a fine celebration I got out there. But now it gives me the opportunity to find out how fast A T and T, or Spectrum, or the other people change their lines. And you know how I love challenges. But one thing I will always say is, because I see your employees and how great they work, and somebody needs to tell them that they're good, because I see it. And let me tell you, I love construction, and I have construction where I live. And let me tell you, I close my eyes when I see the construction in my neighborhood. But I'm going to read something today that I think it's appropriate. And I guess I got to read it fast now. It is, "The most important thing about being alive is that you can get to be you. There is no one else alive that looks just like you, no one else that has your purpose, no one else has your swag." That's true. No one else can do that thing that you do, the way that you do it. Whenever you're feeling a little confused about who and what you are, remember that you were put here to be just like you, and it's so most important to be unique. But in closing, I want to say, I appreciate every person that's here, inside, all the workers, and even the persons outside, because I can feel myself like I know them, because I've done this before. It's not new.
Thank you.
Janie, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Now we have Patricia Major, who will be also speaking on behalf of, she will have four total minutes. She will be speaking on behalf of Sharon Whitek as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Patricia Major. I'm a CPS retiree. I'm also a customer of this city public service for my entire, well, at least since 1964. I'm a member of the CPS Group Health Plan, and today I want to speak about the Benefits Oversight Committee E B O C report that's on the agenda for today, and a similar report, the E B O C Executive Summary that was presented, approved, actually, or the meeting for January 13th, 2025. It's a meeting report, item number I. And that item stated that the committee approved design changes to the CPS Health Plan post-retiree medical benefits, and that current retiree plans would be replaced with new, fully insured Medicare coordinated plans with recommendations for specific health plan offerings and premiums to come later. Now, these specific reports are presented, but most retirees do not know about them. And if they did know about them, perhaps they would come to a board meeting and discuss it, or at least present comments and questions. One thing about these reports, they have limited information, and they're not exactly minutes of the committee meeting. And there's some things that are very vague, like action items list reviewed. There's no detail on that. One thing also that I wanted to point out about the general agenda for today and other days is when these committee reports are presented, the E B O C and others, the trend has been for the, at the board meetings, for the chair, regardless of who has been the chair, to state that in the interest of time, the chair would accept the submission of the reports for the record in lieu of having read them during the meeting, or possibly even opportunities for board members to discuss that aren't on the E B O C committee. Like I said, most retirees are probably not aware of these reports. Now, going back to the question about the health plan changes that reflect Medicare retirees, we understand that circumstances have changed a lot since 1983, when this health plan was started. And we also understand significant reasons to update the health plan. What we ask is that CPS employees should continue to be recognized and acknowledged for their years of service to the community and the customers, especially those with over 20 years. The group health plan was one way to do so because of the formula that was used to calculate the premiums, which included a consideration of how many years of service they had when they retired. That particular health plan that we're talking about, which currently exists, has three types of coverage, A, B, and C, which retirees have been able to take advantage of up through this year. Now, going forward, it appears that we're going to be segregated into aged-based risk groups. We feel that the transparency and communication with the 1,300 retirees that are going to be affected, and those are the people that are currently on Medicare and using the health plan, about the change coming has been very inadequate. The February 27th letter, the April 10th park meeting, and the two focus groups in May, along with various other individual phone calls or emails that have occurred, have not calmed the concerns of many retirees. That is why there's a group of people here today to support my comments and the comments of several speakers. Then behind us, there's going to be 700 retirees that fall into the group of people that are retired but not on Medicare yet. What we really like to ask is to please finish the design that you're working on, but to slow down the implementation process. This was also addressed last month. To slow it down until all of the facts can be known and the items explained to the 1,300 people that are immediately going to be affected. We really ask the board and the E B O C committee, which is two board members included, for choice. We asked this last month also. One choice is to keep the health plan options A or B that we currently have.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Ms. Isabel Hernandez would like to cede her two minutes to Ms. Major.
As I stated, we'd like the choice to keep the A or B option that we currently have, stay in the risk pool and pay the premiums based on the formula. Or to offer the change to the fully insured plans of option D, E, or F to those that want to switch in 2026, but allow us to switch at a later date when we feel more comfortable. We were told that there is plenty of money in the trust fund, and we were told that this money could only be used for retirees. We have not been told to date how any of that trust fund money will be used to subsidize the premiums for the newly insured plans. A few retired executives were told at a focus group meeting last week that the new insured plans will not be considered self-funded, with no explanation of how the health plan assets will be used in the future. We have been told that the current retiree representative on the administrative committee does not have the CPS health plan, but that this person has strongly supported the new direction and is familiar with Medicare supplement plans. CPS management selects the retiree representative without input from the people involved. Many retirees that are post-65 have expressed to CPS management at the April 10th meeting at the park that they do not want or do not care about Medicare supplement or Advantage Insurance plans. We've been told about hardship cases where we need to have some consideration for the high premiums for people who have less than 35 years of service. We support providing them with an option. We understand the need to do that, but we don't think that providing them an option by taking something away from us is helpful. In closing, I would add that we again ask the board and E B O C to modify or amend the January 25 decision to allow retirees on Medicare to continue the CPS health plan options A and B with the existing formula for the years of service. Thank you very much for the time given to me today. And I go to my next speaker.
Thank you for your input. We now have Theodore Slansky, followed by Ana Trevino.
Hello. I am Theodore Slansky, a pre-65 retiree, speaking on item eight. And I have 29 years of service. The new plans may or may not be better for me. I am here on behalf of myself, over-65 retirees, and pre-65 retirees to voice my concerns regarding concepts that have already been approved by the E B O C committee, specifically item I from the January 13th, 2025 E B O C meeting report mentioned by the previous speaker. In a letter I received dated February 27th, 2025 from CPS Energy, the following statement was included. During our fall 2025 open enrollment season, CPS Energy will offer new benefit plan options for Medicare-eligible participants that will be effective January 1st, 2026. To myself and others I have spoken to, it was implied from the letter that the new benefit options for post-65 retirees were additional options that were going to be added. We ask the board, and specifically the E B O C, for choice not to be forced onto a plan that is in conflict with promises historically made to current retirees, that is, to allow the customers to elect to stay on plan A or B. We have been told the current retiree representative is not on the CPS health plan. The retiree representative who serves on the administrative committee is compensated for time and expenses. The current retiree representative is essentially a contracted consultant that has no vested interest in representing current and future retirees on the group health plan. And I would appreciate it if any current retirees in the audience could please stand up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Now we have Ana Trevino, followed by Brian Lopez.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Ana Trevino, and I'm here today because I, along with other community members, who you can see back there, and organizations are demanding that CPS Energy stop inhumane utility disconnections and immediately put this on their agenda up for discussion. Many young people and working-class people are struggling to keep up with bills and are at risk for utility disconnections by CPS Energy. This has real consequences for people, as they may be unable to afford to keep their medicines cool, critical care machines running, and are in danger of having their A C turned off at a time when they are experiencing some of the worst heat in South Texas. Instead of helping build and sponsor more data centers that consume our public utilities for private profits, our publicly-owned utility company, CPS Energy, needs to do more to alleviate the economic and utility burdens placed on working-class people. I'm asking that you, Dr. Romero, as my district representative, put this on the agenda discussion today. Working-class people cannot wait and need a no-disconnection policy now. Utility disconnections are inhumane.
Thank you. We now have Brian Lopez, followed by Dominique Renteria.
Good afternoon, members of the CPS Board. Since March, myself, members of the Climate Justice San Antonio Coalition, and San Antonio residents who have been directly impacted by CPS's unfair billing practices, have been coming to these meetings trying to get acknowledgement of our struggle. We have sent emails that have remained unanswered. We have told stories of our plight, and we're told to talk to staff in the back on the way out. The fact of the matter is, our city has been leaving the working class behind for years and hiding behind empty promises of growth and economic revival. One of the leading culprits of this has been CPS, with repeated rate increases, inhumane disconnection practices that affect the most vulnerable citizens, and quiet backroom deals with corporate lobby groups such as the Energy Forward Alliance. One item that particularly concerns me is Dr. Romero's conflict of interest as chair of the CPS Board. Dr. Romero, you have also served as U T S A's Chair for Public Administration. I find it curious that you have been appointed to this current CPS position at the same time that U T S A President Amy and Governor Abbott are forcing legislation through to establish a $5 billion cybersecurity command here in downtown San Antonio, yet another energy hogging venture that will surely receive preferential rates, while retirees in older homes, including your retirees, will have to choose between power bills, groceries, and medications. The working class of San Antonio is facing a death by 1,000 cuts as inflation, tariffs, and rising rents bleed our citizens dry. This board has the ability to directly relieve at least one burden these people face. I encourage you to do so or get used to seeing us.
Thank you for your input. We now have Dominique Renteria, followed by Angel Duran.
My name is Dominique. I'm a Southside resident, born and raised, and a member of Oppress Revolutionaries for Worker Power. I'm here to speak against utility disconnections. Utility disconnections are inhumane. The commodification of our basic needs has allowed for a board of unelected members to decide who is deserving and undeserving of electricity while we enter a summer of record-breaking temperatures. Utilities are right. They should be free and guaranteed. And the only way that happens is when working people have the power and this unnecessary, out-of-touch, and unconcerned-with-the-most-vulnerable-of-communities is abolished. And I just want to take this opportunity, this happen-chance opportunity, to say farewell to sell-out, genocide-supporting Ron. Y'all have the worst day.
Thank you. We now have Angel Duran, followed by Ray Cardenas.
I am a working-class woman. I am an educator, and I take pride in being able to contribute to our community, which is why I'm wondering why 180,000 plus working-class families are at risk for utility disconnections. This is an embarrassment to our proud and working-class community, who depend on these public services, all while other corporations, who do not represent our communities, encroach and get discounted rates. I am sure that there are ways beyond bogus payment plans and hollow statements of uncertain aid that you, as the board, can implement. While I may be new to this, speaking to you, it will not be the last time you see me. Utility disconnections are inhumane. And you need to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Ray Cardenas, followed by Alex Peña.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Cardenas. I'm a San Antonio resident who's an advocate for my community. The city of San Antonio is facing serious safety hazards, hazards that CPS is failing to address due to a broken internal process. I'm here today because I've tried following your reporting system for over a year and a half, and it simply does not work. Throughout the city, there are wires hanging down, some drooping onto sidewalks easily accessible to any child or adult passing by. Whether they are actively dangerous or not, they are a danger. A child tugging on them out of curiosity could be seriously hurt. The public has no way of knowing these wires, whether these wires are live or not. After I report hazards to CPS months ago, nothing changes. When I call back for an update, I'm told that it has already been reported, and I cannot receive any information because I'm not the account holder at that location, even though I was the reporting party. There is no logic to that policy, considering these wires are fully accessible on public easements along sidewalks, walking routes near elementaries and middle and high schools. As a former curious child myself, I know how tempting it is to explore what's around. These wires are an accident waiting to happen, yet there is no transparency, accountability, or urgency to resolve these issues. Why is that acceptable? Why is CPS Energy, an entity that's owned by the people of San Antonio, not prioritizing public safety, even though y'all were just talking about that a little while ago? I'm not here to assign blame. I'm here to ask you to take ownership. If CPS is not responsible for these wires, then help identify who is so that we can facilitate the repair process. Hold other utility companies accountable for using, especially when they're using your infrastructure. This runaround between entities is not just inefficient, it's dangerous. Today, I'm asking for a meeting with the board and C E O to discuss the reporting process specifically. I want to know a couple of things. The reason I'm asking you for this stuff is because if we're not getting these things taken care of, there's no use, right? And so I'm not here to argue. I'm just here to express to you that there's legitimate concerns. I have proper documentation because I've had to. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. We now have Alex Peña, followed by Luisa Saltevagnas.
Good afternoon, Board. Every time I walk into this building, we are told what cannot be done. We can't say no to price hikes. We can't say no to data centers. We can't say no to portfolio acquisitions. We can't say no to bonuses. And yet, "no" is the word I hear every single time we suggest stopping disconnections, or lowering prices, or getting more assistance from that large trust of piggy bank funds that y'all have saved up. And every single time we walk in here, more and more people get into debt. Now, I'm sure you know that more people will continue to get into debt with the current structure that you have laid out, especially when all of the accounts and holdings that you have are making money for you. We need to remember that your job here, literally, your job, is to make sure that every single citizen is represented by their public utility committee. If you are doing anything short of that or providing, then you are failing at your job. At the end of the day, the only thing you people have to remember this position, specifically this position, is the work and goodness you get out of it, or put into the world with it. You have power. You have resources. You have time. You have staff. You have support. There is no reason why you cannot be doing more. When we said that we don't want the bare minimum, we don't want half compromises, this is what we mean. That is all.
Thank you for your input. We now have Luisa Saltevagnas, followed by Jeanette Rico.
I'm here again to urge the leaders of this board committee, especially our trustee Gonzalez, who represents our district, to stop life-saving utility disconnections for our residents at the highest risk of vulnerability due to age, disability, and chronically acute health conditions. With record-level temperatures above 100 degrees, our residents cannot be left in the dark at home with spoiling food, oven-hot, scorching environments, and unrefrigerated life-saving medicines and equipment. We are thankful to the programs that do exist and that serve our residents, like utility assistance programs, Casa Verde, and other nonprofits who share their resources to prevent disconnections and that weatherize homes. But we know funding is limited, and the qualification criteria is out of reach for many of the families sometimes, and the rates are just way too high. Our families cannot wait in the dark, and reconnection fees adds economic burden to an already stressful situation. We need to focus on strategies that address the root cause of the problem, and there are still so many barriers preventing those services from being accessed by all residents, especially our lowest-income-earning families. Thus, the most immediate solution that can be made to prevent families from living in the sweltering heat and forced outdoors is to stop the disconnections immediately. We also want to acknowledge the efforts being made by Climate Justice San Antonio to force Barre County and the city government to collaborate in requiring the medical examiner's office to account for the impacts of heat-related deaths by documenting all loss of life caused by or made worse by heat-related injuries. If we are serious about reducing the number of unnecessary and preventable deaths in our community, it's going to take all of the public-serving institutions working together, and that involves CPS public service. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Jeanette Rico, followed by Erica Alvarado.
My name is Jeanette Rico, and I'm a resident of the Alizan Apache Courts, but I'm also an advocate for the community. I help them find places that can help them with their utility assistance, reconnect their lights, because a lot of assistance requires that your lights are on to get the assistance. But I have come in contact with a lot of people that the assistance didn't come, unfortunately, or came too late, and they've experienced everything from miscarriage to losing a child, being without electricity, and even an elderly man who is an amputee, who was just trying to keep warm in the winter, and he lit a barbecue pit to keep warm, and fortunately, he burned to death. These are just some of the stories of the people that I've come in contact with that have stuck with me and have kept me to wake up every day and do what I do, and continue to fight and do this for the community. I'm really thankful for Janie Gonzalez being on our side and trying to push for us. You don't know how much it means to us. And also, if you're opposed to it, you're being opposed to people's lives, to their children's lives, to their human rights. Our utilities are a human right. It's not a privilege. And I just hope that you take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Erica Alvarado, followed by Jake Turner.
Hi. My name is Erica Alvarado. I live and work in District 2. So, Dr. Makey, please pay attention. I'm here
Hi, my name's Erica Alvarado. I live and work in District 2. So, Dr. Mackey, please pay attention. I'm here to stand in solidarity with Climate Justice Alliance in saying the disconnections are inhumane. Also, I wanted to say, by Ron, you were worthless, Mayor.
And our final speaker is Jake Turner.
My name is Jake Tucker. I'm a resident of trustee Gonzalez's quadrant. In 2020 to 2021, I was part of a group that was doing direct outreach to low-income residents, helping them file for rental and utility assistance provided by federal pandemic emergency funding. We expected to find a lot of, like, provide assistance to the laid-off workers like myself and my hotel coworkers. But what we found was actually most of the people that we assisted were elderly and disabled retirees on fixed incomes. These fixed incomes were not enough to make their ends meet. Often, more than half of their income went to their rents and then medical expenses. And then after medical expenses and food, it left them unable to pay for their utilities. Since that time, housing costs have skyrocketed. Inflation has plagued the economy, and CPS has raised our rates twice and saddled us with the debt from the CPS mismanagement from Winter Storm Yuri. And now, there's little to no emergency assistance despite our cost of living increasing tremendously. So, the crisis for hundreds of thousands of residents persists without any emergency assistance. Our incomes have not increased relative to our expenses, and we fall further and further behind. And this is the reality of our day-to-day lives. We're forced to make impossible decisions and then shamed for a catch-22 situation. I know you cannot control our price of housing or food or medical expenses, but what you can do is take life-saving measures to end disconnections for the people struggling to make their ends meet. And you absolutely must do this because disconnections are inhumane. Thanks for hearing me out.
Chair, that was our final speaker.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming today. We are listening, and I think you will see some future agenda items that are in line with what you're asking us to address. For my chair remarks today, I just, I was going to reiterate the safety messages, but I just wanted to thank everybody for being such good sports about our new safety policies in the room. So, thank you all for that. Happy birthday to Ms. LaGrange, although I don't think she's here. Belated happy birthday to our CEO. And, and I did want to thank Richard Medina and his team, who did react very quickly to some drop lines that I got a complaint about from a customer. So, we also did want to encourage our community to connect with CPS Energy this summer at many of our ongoing events. We really want to reach out to people to learn about energy conservation rebates and other programs that can help them with their energy use. Today, you will hear from our teams as they talk about summer preparedness, which is something we always do in May. And there's a schedule of events coming up where customers can visit with the CPS Energy team to learn more about assistance and other resources to help them with their bills. I just want to keep reiterating this. There are plans. There are ways to get assistance with your bills, and we are listening to you. And again, I, I know one of our speakers said that's not what you want to hear, but we have team members outside today if anyone needs to talk about assistance options. Many of our customers can benefit from the Budget Payment Plan, which allows residential and business customers to average their energy expenses to flatten the cost and avoid the surprise of an unexpected higher-than-normal energy bill when the weather changes. We urge customers to call for assistance they may need at 210-353-2222. On average, our team members are working to connect customers with support in 10 different locations across the community every day. On the screens, you will see the latest schedule of community resource fairs and small and medium-business support fairs. And with that, I will turn it over to our CEO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, today, I'm gonna recognize, we've recognized many different parts of our business. The, the folks behind the scenes and remote from our area, the most are our power generation operations and market operations employees, our asset management folks, and our energy portfolio analytics team. So, today, as we approach the summer season, which you will hear more about a little later in the meeting, we want to recognize our power generation operators. They're responsible for the safe and reliable operation of our power plants and continuously monitor the condition of plant systems and equipment. These teams operate a demanding 12-hour rotating shift schedule, requiring flexibility to work days, nights, weekends, and holidays, as do most of our field employees. This commitment extends to all seasons, including peak winter and summer periods, often during severe weather conditions. They're trained to take appropriate actions during emergency conditions to ensure we keep the lights on. Please join in me in thanking them for their hard work. Next, I'd like to highlight our market operations, asset management, and energy portfolio analytics teams. Working together, these groups deliver key analytic insights and commercialization strategies to optimize our position in the ERCOT market. Their efforts supporting the transition of the Corpus Christi and Laredo plants into our fleet has driven significant growth in our wholesale revenue, resulting in outstanding financial performance last year that goes directly to the benefit of our customers. Please join in me in thanking these teams for their accomplishments last year and the work that they will do ahead of us with the summer run season. All of you, thank you for your work. Your, your work goes, goes recognized today. Thank you. So, that was our Power Gen Operations Group. We're gonna take a different picture with the Market Operations, Asset Management, and Energy Portfolio Analytics Teams. So, while, while they're assembling, let me just explain the process that the previous group goes through to, to let this group know what plants are running, when, you know, we have to take a plant offline, and we might have to pivot to make sure our market position is covered. I mean, this is precisely the type of one-team mindset that we're talking about. Our, our, our folks that are up on the fourth floor here that manage our daily activity in the ERCOT market have to communicate with the folks we just had up here to make sure that we're, you know, maximizing the opportunity we have with our, with our fleet, which, you know, we've invested so much time and money on. So, this is a team that takes the information from the field and makes sure that our position is covered so our customers aren't exposed to the market volatility some, some days. So, thank you very much. We're gonna take another picture. Okay. My overview of the agenda today is gonna be really, really quick. We've got two items on our consent agenda that really are fundamental to how we maintain reliability in this community because we work with our union to come up with a standard for our bucket trucks. And because of the work that we do with our unions to make sure that that fundamental tool to the work that they do every day, you know, works for them and is right, you know, that's, that drives the, the contract that's before you today for the bucket trucks. You know, we've got behind, quite frankly, on replacing that equipment. We have come up with a, with a plan to, to get, you know, replace old trucks with the, with these trucks. And so, this is, this is a really important item that, that speaks directly to our support for our line crews out in the field. And then, of course, vegetation management. You know, the more companies we can get into our program, the more options we have to maintain reliability. So, those two items are critically important. The two presentations that you'll hear today, I want to thank KPMG for their work on our audit this year. I think we'll have a good report there. And then, of course, our teams will provide their summer readiness presentation, which we give every year, that will let you know all the activity that we've done, the, the documents I have to sign that go to ERCOT, saying that we have done our jobs and are ready for the summer run season. And I'm proud of the team for the work that they put in to get ready. Obviously, with last week, we had an early, an early start to the summer run season, and we had a tremendous week last week. So, that is the agenda for today.
Okay. Thank you. This brings us to item six, which is bittersweet for me, our recognition of Mayor Nierenberg. So, I just wanted to say a few words. Everybody's gonna get a chance to speak here. I've known Mayor Nierenberg a long time, since way before you ran for public office. I, I remember you and I went to a City Council B session a long time ago to talk about the city's website. And I was not as comfortable there as you were, as I recall. I, I want to say a lot of good things about what you do here as a colleague, but you're not gonna keep me from saying today that I recognize the mayor for all the work he's done to protect the Edwards Aquifer, that we have protected almost 200,000 acres of aquifer-recharged land that we would not have been able to accomplish without his support over the years. And also, I wanted to point out your attention to UTSA students and other students throughout the community. I remember you leading my class to go vote at the Student Union many years ago, and that was so exciting. And I know they will never forget. They were all voting for the first time. It was a presidential election, and I know they will always keep voting because of that. Here at CPS, I have just so appreciated your calm leadership that you have led us on so many items, renewables, resiliency, fiscal responsibility, caring for our employees, and especially caring about our customers, and that you always wanted to know all the facts before making a decision. I wrote down a lot of the things that you said since I've been on the board. So, about three years ago, I think it was like my third meeting, and you said that as a board, we should be as interested in hearing the answer as we are in asking the question. And that's been really important to me because it's, it's so true that I can have questions. I can have questions reflect the community, but we have to hear back what staff is telling us and, and really listen to that. So, you have really pushed for fairness, balance, and you have just been a wonderful and even-keeled colleague on this board. And I'm sorry, I only had three years out of your eight here. I'm gonna turn it over to Rudy next.
Mayor, first off, I want to thank you for taking a chance on me. We, we've, we've been through a lot just as a community and on this, in this organization. My time coming in as CEO was difficult, you know, right after Winter Storm Yuri. And, you know, you were part of the majority of the board that gave me a shot. And I've tried my hardest to, you know, for us to improve the city relationship with our honor, which we, which I think we've accomplished. You know, one of my closest confidants, who gives me advice every day, I'm glad he's here today. But Eric and I speak frequently, and I think that's improved the way we try to serve this community. I think you have been fair, and you have, you know, been clear in what you believe the expectations of this community are of CPS Energy. And we've done everything we can do to try to deliver on that, on that promise, you know, every day. Again, what you've taught me is it's not about us. Here at CPS Energy, it's about our employees, and it's about, you know, the service we provide to the community as a, as a publicly-owned asset. And I try to reinforce that value, that fundamental value of what we are with my employees every single day. So, from the bottom of my heart, I'm gonna, we're gonna miss your leadership as a community. You know, you've, you've given it all that you have for San Antonio, Mayor, and I, as a citizen and as a colleague, I want to thank you for coming here every day, for trying to stay focused on the fundamental mission of why we're here, and for leading from front. Thank you, sir.
Trustee Gonzalez? Justy Mackey?
I think, I think everyone has shared all the information, all the things, great things about you and serving on this board. I've served on this board seven years. I've enjoyed your leadership. And a lot of times, I get a little frustrated, and I look towards you. We make eye contact, and you put it into context for me. And I want to thank you for that. You've been a genuine guy, a great person to know, to know and, and to talk to and to vent, vent with in times. So, I appreciate you. And, you know, I don't trust a lot of people, and I don't put my hands in a lot of people's hands. I'm very secluded. I stay to myself. I don't associate with a lot of people. But I was able to connect with you, and we were able to deliver and do some great things for CPS for the years that I've been on this board. And I want to thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Dr. Mackey, what can I say, Mayor? As you close this powerful chapter in public service, I want to thank you personally, not only for the years of leadership, but for the vision, the values, and the courage you've brought to every decision you've made for our city. You led with integrity, compassion, and conviction. Your focus, unwavering focus on equity for people and community has transformed how San Antonio moves forward. From embedding equity in city budgeting to expanding access to public health and workforce opportunities, you've made sure that no one was left behind. You put people first, and you make sure that women and diverse leaders had a seat at the table, and I thank you for that. I know because I am one of those individuals, and I thank you again sincerely for that opportunity. Together, we've helped move our city towards a smarter, more inclusive future from collaborating on digital equity, also, digital grid equity initiatives, to building trusted energy and infrastructure policies at CPS Energy, to showing the country how a city can lead with people at the center. We did this work together, side by side, with my colleagues here. We took bold steps. Others were hesitant to take. We stood firm and are believed that leadership must reflect the people we serve. Beyond policy and power, you've touched our hearts. My daughter, who's nine, Billy Jane, you can see her in that picture, will miss you deeply. She's a big fan of you. But she's a fan of you because even at the tender age of nine, she understands what it is to meet real people, people who really care. Even at that age, she knows who's fake and who's not, and she's a big fan. Your kindness, your presence, made her feel so special. And that's what you did, not just for a nine-year-old. You did that for many individuals throughout the city of San Antonio. You made them feel seen. Important in today's environment, where we're raising what it is to be seen. So, for that, I thank you. Your leadership made a difference. Your impact will last far beyond your term and your next chapter. Whatever it leads will surely continue to reflect the values that you've made, that you've made you, not just a great mayor, but a great human being. With sincere gratitude and admiration, myself, and I'll always be here to support you and thank your beautiful wife and your son. So, gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, I didn't mean to leave you out if you wanted to, to say anything. Yeah.
The mayor still has another month at City Hall. So, we, we've got a lot of, a lot to do.
Okay. I'm gonna pass it to Ms. Ramirez to read a resolution, which we will then vote on, and I think we can vote by acclamation instead of roll call. And as she does that, Heather's bringing up a little token that we have.
It would be my pleasure. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees' Resolution in honor of Mayor Ron Nierenberg... The CPS Energy Board of Trustees Resolution in honor of Mayor Ron Nuremberg. Whereas Ron Nuremberg is the mayor of the city of San Antonio for the past eight years, has served as an ex officio member of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, keeping city council fully informed and advised about the actions of the board. And whereas during his tenure, Mayor Nuremberg was instrumental in the selection of president and CEO, Mr. Rudy Garza, and has assisted in the appointment or reappointment of the current board members, which includes Ms. Janie Martinez Gonzalez, Dr. Willis Mackey, Dr. Francine Sanders Romero, and Mr. John Steen. And whereas Mayor Ron Nuremberg has been a leader on the board during critical times of transition for CPS Energy and its Board of Trustees, and he's provided valuable guidance and leadership to set CPS Energy on a path to the future. And whereas Mayor Nuremberg's devotion to improve CPS Energy's engagement with our community resulted in a better understanding of the values and priorities of our community, including the development of the Community Input Committee. And whereas Mayor Nuremberg worked as fellow trustees to adopt the Vision 2027 Generation Plan, which continues progress to meet the San Antonio Climate Action and Adaptation Plan goals, and puts at the forefront of emerging technologies. And whereas Mayor Nuremberg played a vital role in supporting our financial resiliency, recognizing the need to make investments to support the San Antonio community for generations to come, and to strengthen the proud partnership between CPS Energy and the city of San Antonio and surrounding communities. And whereas during his tenure, CPS Energy's assets grew by a total of 4.6 billion, and CPS Energy conveyed 3.2 billion to its owner, the city of San Antonio, as a return on investment. And whereas Mayor Nuremberg coordinated with his fellow trustees to adopt Horizon 2050, charting our long-term strategic path and mission to safely power our community with reliable, affordable, and cleaner energy. And whereas Mayor Nuremberg's expertise, dedication, leadership, and unselfish commitment of time and energy to the board have greatly benefited not only CPS Energy, but all of its customers within the greater San Antonio area. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees conveys to Mayor Nuremberg its deep and abiding gratitude for his unselfish service to CPS Energy and its customers, and be it further resolved that this resolution be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is passed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Nuremberg, the floor is yours.
Well, I won't be long. That's, just thank you. I wasn't, I didn't see this on the agenda, so I hope we didn't violate any Texas laws by putting it here. Yeah. Well, just thank you for your remarks. They're very touching. Everything I've done in this job and everything that I have done as mayor of San Antonio has been because it's my job. I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the warm thoughts and the friendships and relationships I've made along the way. I always have to remind myself, though, that, because this is also a job where we get a lot of criticism, as you've seen, that in order for us to have a great organization, we have to continue to be led by core values, which I admire in this organization. We've been through some very difficult times in CPS Energy, but as we have restored this utility, we have done so on the foundation of our core values. And what I will always have to remind myself is that in the midst of all the controversy and the, and the disagreements, and there's many, policy disagreements and otherwise, our goal has to be to continue to serve this entire community. I am not the mayor of the group of 15 people who yell at me frequently. I'm not the mayor of the city council or of this board. I'm the mayor of the city of San Antonio. And so the, the decisions we make have to be reflective of what is in the best interest of the entire community. And so for that, I am grateful to all of my colleagues who have been so great to work with. I've enjoyed working with each of you. I have great confidence in all of you as, as I pass the baton on, and I'm gonna miss you all, but I won't be far. So thank you very much for the recognition. It's very humbling and, and, but it will be having, it'll have a special place in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Steen is detained, so we are gonna put off pictures until the end of our session. And if you want to bring that up, we can have that. He, maybe. Thank you.
Officially a blue shirt.
Thank you. Do I have license to climb the pole now?
No, sir.
You can go on the bucket truck.
All right. We are on item seven, consent agenda. Does anyone, anybody want to pull any items either from the consent agenda or from the Hearing none. We are open for a motion on the entire consent agenda, which is 7A, B, C, 1, and C2.
Can we vote individually?
That's what I was asking. Did you want to pull?
Yeah, I wanna, I don't want to pull anything, but I do want to vote individually.
Do you want to vote individually on every item?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just on C?
On, on every item, if, if you're okay with that, Madam Chair.
All righty.
This is consent?
This is consent. Yes.
All right. I'll move to approve item 7A.
I'll second item A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're going, we're voting individually?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I vote for item A.
Okay, we need roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call. So there's a first and then a second, and...
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justy Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
7A passes.
I'll move approval of 7B.
Second, approval of 7B.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justy Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
7B passes.
I'll move approval of 7C.
I'll second the approval of 7C.
This is for 7C 1 and 2?
Yeah, if that's all right.
Yes, 1 and 2 as well.
All right. Roll call vote, please, for 7C 1 and 2.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justy Gonzalez? Chair?
Yes.
7C 1 and 2 passes.
All right. We are on to our regular agenda. Item 8 is the board committee reports. Those are in your packet. Is there any discussion on item 8?
I need guidance. Do I go to the chair? Do I go to the chair for guidance?
I guess say it, and then we can say who wants to, if you guys want to.
And I don't know, since the, we've had several meetings, and I don't want to be disrespectful to the chairwoman, but I was, I believe, the current chair in January for the EBOC information, so I just wanted to request if I could get that information sent to me just as a refresh, just to review. So I wasn't quite sure how to bring that up, either as an item, or do I do it through you directly?
We'll take that action item, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, I don't want to be respectful. I just want to, it was discussed today. I want to recall those notes and what took place during that meeting, since it was reference, and that's pretty much the extent. That was the only thing, Madam Chair. Sorry about that.
Okay, so you were saying for the January meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sure. Anything else on item 8? All right, that was just for discussion. And item 9. Item 9 is our annual audited financial statements.
And Chairwoman, I'll briefly introduce this next item, if that's fine. This is our fourth year using KPMG as our lead auditor and Shriver Carmona as the local subcontractor firm. We had a clean opinion, a clean unmodified audit opinion, which means the results are positive, and no issues were found. I do want to point out that the audit has gotten smoother and gained more efficiencies over the years, so thank you to both gentlemen and their teams for their work. So with that, Chairwoman, I'll hand it over to them to do their report out.
Happy to be here. As Corey said, we did issue the audit report on April 28th. It was a clean opinion, and I owe that to a few things. First off, our relationship with management and the coordination between the two has been fantastic. We can only do as much work as they help us with. So their timely participation and coordination has been very helpful in this audit. Secondly, is we have an audit technology platform that it's making things more efficient and the quality of our audits even better year after year. And then the third thing is the people. We have people here in San Antonio working on this job, not only with KPMG, but with Shriver and Carmona. And the continuity with the people that we have has made this even easier. And with that, I'm gonna let Chris Carmona from Carmona and Shriver say a couple words.
Thank you, Andy. I'm Chris Carmona. I'm the audit partner for Shriver Carmona CPA. It's good to see all you. As I've said, this is my fourth year. We appreciate the opportunity, a small, local firm, to be a part of this audit. Our team learns every year. We've had the opportunity to learn from some of the best in KPMG, and I'm former KPMG, so I can say that. And I really appreciate the opportunity that only CPS Energy provides for these opportunities for, for Andy and his team for allowing us to learn. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And so now I'm gonna run through some, some of the findings that we have in required communications, and feel free to ask me questions anywhere along the way. As I said, we did, these slides were put together back in April before we issued the financials, so there are no outstanding matters at this point, and there were no corrected or uncorrected items that were identified as part of the audit. Moving on to required communications, there's a few of these things that we'll go through later in the slide deck, but I'll just say that overall, there were no significant findings or any other matters that need to be brought to the attention of the committee here or the board here today. Same here on this slide. There were no consultations that were undertaken that were too complex or difficult for the audit team to, to handle here locally ourselves. And then we'll cover independence here in a few minutes. So the next four slides, they cover what we consider significant accounting estimates that were audited as part of these financial statements. I won't go through all four of these. I can answer questions if you want, but I'll say that these estimates remain consistent with what they've been in the prior years, and we did not have any findings to report to the committee on these estimates. So with that, I'm gonna skip forward to the group audit considerations. So this is a group audit, and the considerations here are consistent with what we went through during planning. So we audit the group here at CPS, but then there's also a significant component, that being the South Texas nuclear project, which we do get reporting from another audit team, and we go through all the findings from them as part of our, our audit procedures. But ours and theirs had no significant findings, and we do subject 100% of all those assets and revenues to, to our audit procedures. From an independence perspective, first off, I'll just say, and we use the date of April 25th on here, but as of today, we remain independent of CPS Energy. There are two things which are consistent with prior years. We do provide access to our accounting research online system, which is basically like a library of trainings and literature that help with research. And then we also provide access to our KPMG learning portal, which is trainings for CPE credit. Both of those are given free of charge, but just wanted to let the, the board know that we do provide those, but it does not inhibit our independence. I think lastly here, so these are the, the services that were performed and the fees. These are consistent with the engagement letter that was previously signed. The only thing you'll note on here is the agreed-upon procedures. It says 150. That's basically a placeholder, so that if there are bond issuances that we, we help with during the year, we, you know, we have a set fee with, with management for those, but otherwise, everything is consistent with what was agreed upon previously. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay, start on the right. Mr. Steen, did you have questions?
Begin by congratulating Corey Kaczynski, our CFO, very capable CFO, on an unmodified, clean report. And thank you all for your diligent work. Are you Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
I was talking to somebody when I came. You're Andy Crouch. Okay, so you presented last year.
Yes.
But thank you for your presentation today. And I went over this last year, Ms. Ramirez, and I can't remember your answer to it. And one of the things I was gonna suggest is that if I do it again, maybe we could put it in the minutes, so I could go back and refer to the minutes. But a quick question for you. When you present annual audited financial statements for various boards, does the process ordinarily conclude with a vote by the board to accept the annual audited financial statements?
So that occurs during the audit committee meetings that were held before the issuance of the financials? This is just to present the results of, of that audit? So there's no approval needed?
Then obviously, there's no required or expected vote, I mean, from your point of view?
No, only through management signing their representation letters and the audit committee.
Yeah, of course, I've been involved with corporations a long time, and I, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but my experience is, is that a company's board of directors typically votes to approve the annual audited financial statements, and this is part of their oversight responsibilities to ensure the company's financial health and accuracy.
I, I think the, in, in my experience, it's usually the audit committee that's delegated that approval right to approve the annual audited financial statements, not the full board. It's usually the, the committee.
If I could just step in for a minute. The governance structure for the committee sets out who is the approving, who is the approving body, and there may be some confusion because in the past, when we had a bonus program, part of the governance structure of that bonus program was to have the board approve the audited financial statements before distributing the bonus. We no longer have that program, and so that governance requirement no longer exists, thus removing the requirement for the full board to approve those statements.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. And now you're reminding me of what you said last year, because, yeah, I'd noted for, for many years, we, we had done that, and, and that was, that changed in, in 2022, and that, and that's the reason. All right, okay. And so, yeah, if you put that in the minutes, I won't, well, I won't even be here next year to bring it up. Please put up Slide 9, entitled Significant Accounting Estimates. And Mr. Crouch, I wanted to note the frequent use of the initialism OPEB, but unless I missed it, there's no explanation of its meaning, and I believe it stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits.
That's correct, yeah.
And so just in the future, respectfully suggest that you make clear the meaning of OPEB in your written presentation.
Yep.
One of those things that you only just, kind of so natural to you, but when I, when I was reading it, I, it didn't click with me what that...
Yeah, we can do that.
Please put up Slide 11, entitled Group Audit Consideration, Group Audit Engagement Considerations. And I note in the column on the far, far right that has the heading Revenue, you show $0 in revenue was attributed to the South Texas project, and I just wanted you to explain that.
So we're, we're not testing the actual revenue transactions that go through there. It's just the, the distributions or equity that come from that significant component or the equity method, component?
All right, I'm not sure I understand that, but you, you are showing, you know, you're showing the total assets and revenue, and you show them for the group audit, and underneath that's the South Texas project. You're showing total assets, but, but why are you showing zero revenue?
We, we can correct that in the future, but again, for the South Texas project, we're relying on another firm or another group to perform an audit of that, provide us with the report and reporting, and we review that and sign off.
You just didn't get the information?
Yeah.
Put it in there. Okay, no problem. Please put up Slide 13, which sets forth your fee structure. A year ago, when you estimated your total fee for 2024, it was pegged at 520,000. And now that you've completed the work, you're showing your actual 2024 fee at 615,000, so that's an increase of 95,000 or 18%. It looks like... It looks like this $95,000 extra was a combination of Texas Commission on Environmental Quality work for $20,000 and revenue bond work for $75,000. So just briefly touch on these additional charges.
Yeah, the revenue, the bond work in our engagement letter, each time there's an issuance, it's $25,000 to do agreed-upon procedures. And so I believe last year, there were three, and those weren't contemplated in the budget, but they were in the engagement letter in case this were to come up. So there were three of them last year where we charged $25,000. And then the other work, I think it was new or not contemplated when we went through the budget earlier last year, but it was something that we spoke with management about and agreed upon.
All right, thank you. And just the last point, in previous meetings, I've observed that your fees are trending down based on familiarity, and that this isn't something negative, it's positive, because you're able to do the job more efficiently. But I note that 2015, 2025 fees are going up, and looking at it, the main reason is a $75,000 increase for, and it's agreed-upon procedures report for CPS Energy's compliance with revenue bond ordinance, and just ask you to explain that.
Yeah, so we did agree upon fees for a five-year period when we started. The $150,000, I think when we come in here next time, it's going to be a lot less. I don't think we're actually going to incur that much. It depends on how many bond issuances occur. So if there were none, that 150 goes away completely. If there's three, it'll be 75.
That's all the questions I have, but just to thank you again, and thank you, Mr., is it Carmona?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Trustee Mackey, any questions? Trustee, yes, all right.
I did. Thank you again for the presentation. Can you specifically let me know if there were any areas that were borderline or closely monitored but didn't rise to the level of a finding?
There are no real gray areas this year. There, you know, there was the acquisition that we did some work on, but it was all pretty straightforward.
Okay.
But otherwise, no confrontations with management or things that we disagreed with.
Okay, great. Just to, more of the questions. What was the most significant risk area reviewed, and how was it mitigated, if any?
So we, when we define significant risk for CPS Energy, the biggest one is we call management override of controls. And so that's if, you know, someone were to overstep what their role or responsibility is to defraud the company. And we have procedures specifically designed to test journal entries on that. So if, I'll give you an example. If someone were to book a journal entry and then review it themselves and no one else sees it, we would consider that a problem. Or if someone, an executive, were to book an entry, we would see that as a problem. So we're looking at all those things to make sure that we don't see that management override of controls.
Okay, and this will be my last question, because I think the other one is self-answered, but were there any limitations in scope of access to systems, resources, or even to data, or even to include personnel during this process?
There were not this year, and the great thing is, being in the fourth year we've done this, it's just gotten more efficient, and we're more familiar with management and getting information, so.
Which probably answers my last question, which is, how does the audit compare to the last one, and are we trending in the right direction when it comes to part of this audit process for the organization?
I think we are. You know, we've had a little bit of, people go in and out from maternity leave, but it was a smooth transition, and now they're back. But otherwise, management's been very helpful with us, and our team's been continuous. Chris Carmona's team, we've had the same individuals working on this engagement for the last four years.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions. No more questions, Madam Chair.
Mayor, any questions? All right, this was just for discussion, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are on to Item 10, Summer Preparedness Update.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Today, our team is going to provide an informational briefing on the summer outlook and our preparations. For today's agenda, we'll start with a summary view of the summer outlook and risks at the statewide and CPS Energy levels, and then we'll provide more detailed information regarding our energy delivery, excuse me, energy supply delivery and customer strategy and communications areas. Today's briefing is information, but please stop us at any time if you have any questions. As a, as a, an alignment exercise, today's presentation aligns with these key areas of our risk management plan, and we have risk mitigation plans under these subcomponents that address peak season preparedness. So I'm going to cover this slide and then hand it off to our operational teams. But just to start at the state level, ERCOT published their long-term peak demand and energy forecast back on April 8th, and they're projecting a 2025 summer peak demand right at about 85.7 gigawatts. As a reminder, the current peak record in ERCOT was set back in 2023, and it was at 85.5 gigawatts. Looking forward, as we look forward to, through ERCOT's CDR report, effectively their supply and demand report, we're seeing, you know, while we're seeing kind of modest growth this summer, starting in 2026 and out through 2030, ERCOT is forecasting a smoothed average of 10 gigawatts of growth each year. So as we've talked about, you know, significant growth, growth that is going to continue to challenge the pace of resource additions, but that will, that, they're projecting at this point in 2030 to have moved from this 85.7 gigawatts to 138.9, so significant growth. As a result of that, as we look forward, you know, this, this summer, there appears to be sufficient capacity, as does next summer, but as we start moving into 2027 and beyond, the ERCOT reserve margin, which is effectively the amount of excess capacity that the region would have to meet the summer demand, is going to project, is projected to considerably shrink and go negative. And just as a reminder, when ERCOT's looking at their reserve margin and peak planning, they're targeting the hour of 8:00 to 9:00 PM in the evening, and that's predominantly because during the summer, we still have very warm temperatures, but the significant amount of solar that we have on the system, you know, is not producing during that hour. So while the overall supply and demand outlook for the summer is in good shape, there are some areas of constraints on the transmission system, which under certain conditions can cause regional pricing situations, and under overload scenarios, have low probability but possible needs to move load around to address reliability. An example situation is one near our service territory and involves constraints between high generation, high generation resources down south and our high load centers in the center part of the state. So moving more locally, and Benny Etheridge and Rick Arutia will cover our local generation outlook, but we're in very good position based on the outage work that the generation team has completed, as well as having sufficient resources to meet our, our summer load. So we're in really good shape. As I mentioned, we do have, you know, some transmission constraints. Our substation and transmission teams have done a phenomenal job of getting our system ready to run reliably throughout the summer. However, as we've shared, there are constraints down south, and this has resulted in two groups of work initiated by ERCOT to support reliability over the next two years. One that we briefed you all on is related to a reliability contract for us to continue to operate our VH Bronig Unit 3 for an additional two years. And additionally, ERCOT is in the process of contracting with a company called Lifecycle Power to bring mobile generation to interconnect to our system to support regional transmission reliability over the next two, two years. So for us, we're focused on working diligently with ERCOT as well as with the other entities to bring these projects to bear. So there's no need for alarm. However, there is an elevated reliability risk just due to generation and load during this, this next two years. So I'll just say in summary, you know, there's been a tremendous amount of work that has gone on across the entire organization to position the utility to serve our customers reliably and affordably across summer. So with that, I'll pass it off to Brian Alonso, who's going to give us a weather outlook.
Good afternoon, trustees. Good to talk to you once again. Let's talk about the summer now. You're probably already thinking about what happened last week. I'm sure that pretty much got the attention of a lot of people, especially here in our area, where we actually did have four days of record-breaking heat going on. We actually had three records. We actually tied one record on Thursday, but we have, did see some triple-digit weather. We did see a couple of days of that already. So I get the question that typically is asked around this time of year, is, is this going to be the trend as we go through the next few months here? And I always say, there's really no correlation on that, and the reason for that, especially this year, is because we're looking at some forecasts long-term that are indicating that we could see some rain chances. So here's what the Climate Prediction Center is saying as we head through this upcoming summer months. When it comes to temperature, looks like a majority of the country here is going to be dealing with above-average temperatures here, and that's to be expected here as we get into those summer months. But the one thing that I'm really interested in is looking more at our precipitation. Now, as you see here in San Antonio, we're kind of in that equal chances, and that's indicating that we could see a high variability here, where we can see below, near, or above-average precipitation, but I'm leaning more towards a slightly above-average. And the reason for that is because some of our forecasts are now indicating that as we head towards the middle and latter part of the summer, we could actually start to see some rain chances in the forecast starting to increase here. And of course, that would be beneficial to our area. I don't have to tell you, we're continuing to deal with water restrictions. A lot of our area lakes are very low, and, and of course, our grasses just need that rain here. And of course, whenever we have into, when we get into these drought conditions, this actually helps to increase our air temperature because there's no moisture in the soil. But as I mentioned, if we can get some maybe perhaps mid to late summer, it could actually keep those temperatures down a little bit, so let's keep our fingers crossed for that. Now, I wanted to start off by talking on this slide. Let's focus on that number of 100-degree days, first of all, here. And as you can see, over the past couple of years and just more recent years, that number's been highly variable here. As you can see, as we head in towards 2022, we had a record-breaking 75 days of triple-digit weather, but last year, we only saw about 27, and that's because July was a little bit more of a wetter month for us, and we did actually see a couple of more inches above at normal than we normally see for that month. So that kind of kept those 100-degree down, 100-degree degrees temperatures down just a little bit. But of course, as we go into the summer months, we still keeping a close eye on what's going to be happening in the tropics. That continues to be a big story as we head into this upcoming season. Of course, it starts officially on June 1st, and normally, I like to come and talk to you and say we're looking at La Niña or El Niño. It looks like as we head into the summer months, we're going to be expecting neutral conditions in the Equatorial Pacific, those waters there. I sometimes like to call it La Nada here, and how that affects our weather and our tropical season is a little variability going on, but I wanted to show you how in Enzo-neutral years, we've had about 12 storms that have impacted the Texas coast from 2000 to 2023. Now, they're calling for a slightly above-average season because there's warm waters in the Gulf, and at the same time, there's weaker wind shear in the Atlantic. So that could help to cause a little bit more in the way of some active tropical systems. Now, it's still too early to say whether or not one would come directly at us, but this is something we'll have to keep a close eye on, especially as we go through the summer months. So, yeah, we'll be continuing to monitor on that. Now, I'll turn it over to Benny Etheridge.
As Benny's coming up, I'll just say, I can, some of the most positive feedback I continue to get from customers is the weather alerts that we send out when weather's coming in, and that man is the one behind the information. So I just want to point out, Brian, we appreciate the work that you do, and hiring a meteorologist was absolutely a good thing to do for us.
So good afternoon, trustees. I want to build on what Elena said. We have had each of our teams pull together summer preparedness plans, and they're all focused on building in lessons learned from the past as we prepare our people, get our processes up to speed for what we may encounter, and finally, make sure our equipment is ready to go. Looking ahead to the summer for the Energy Supply Organization, I can tell you that our, our teams have completed their preparations. Fuel is lined up. We've got our demand response program in place that you'll hear from Deanna in a little bit about. Bottom line is, units are going to be ready to go, and we're looking at about 9,500 megawatts of resource capacity in place. Our last peak demand was back in August of '23 at 5,860. So we've done the work that needs to be done to prepare our community, and we're, we're standing by, waiting for hot weather or storms, whatever comes our way. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Rick Arutia to talk about power generation.
Good afternoon, trustees. Rick Arutia, Vice President, Generation Operations. So glad y'all got to meet, or at least see some of the faces of our operations teams this, this afternoon. I want to start by, you guys could stand up, reintroduce y'all to the plant leaders in power gen. So we have Paolo over there. He's interim director at Calaveras. He's filling in for us right now until we find a, a permanent position. Ryan McDonald, he's a new face. He's leading our Bronig Power Station group. We have Gary Hans here with Rio. Gary's been around a while and doing a great job leading Rio. Wanted to separately introduce Rich and Glenn there. Raise your hands. They are newest additions. Glenn's at Laredo. Rich is leading our Corpus team. So these are the, these are the guys that lead the operators, maintenance, engineering teams out there that ensure that our plants are ready to go. So thank you, guys. Great job. So as it relates to our preparedness, as Benny mentioned, we're really focused on those three things, people, process, and equipment. And power gen, from a people perspective, we always start with safety. Our teams are working in those hot temperatures and those severe, you know, conditions at times, so we want to make sure that they have all the training and information they need to be successful. Kind of tied into that operationally is our processes. You know, we're a procedurally-driven organization, so we use, we use process to be successful. So every year, we'll review our procedures as it relates to hot weather, emergency operations, severe weather, of course hurricanes, and as we now have the Corpus plants, that becomes even more important to us as a fleet. So, and then last but not least, equipment. You know, we just ended our outage season for our power plants. So we spend, you know, three months or so doing proactive maintenance to ensure that our plants are ready to go. So happy to report that our people and our, our plants are ready for summer operation. Next slide. So also wanted to just use this time to revisit or visit our Bronig Unit 3 Reliability Must Run or RMR activities. So as you recall, Bronig Unit 3 was RMR'd, as we call it, with ERCOT. This past year, we signed a contract in which the unit will be serving in that RMR role. We have been focused, or let me just say this, as we prepared for that contract, we worked with ERCOT, and we let them know we would have to perform an outage on that unit so that we knew that it was ready to perform safely and reliably, you know, due to the age of the unit and, of course, the condition of the unit. So we've been doing that. In March, we started that outage. Ryan and his team and many others have been working together to inspect and make repairs to that unit. A lot of good work has been done. We did find one activity, or, excuse me, we found an issue with one of our systems. It's a boiler system, and that work will require some, some extended maintenance. This is one of the superheated steam headers that will need to be replaced. As a result of that work, Bronig 3 is now forecasted to return sometime in mid-December. Teams are working to, you know, mobilize crews and get the work started in the field. So in summary, we continue our work with ERCOT collaboratively and working to get Bronig 3 back as soon as possible. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Richard Medina.
Yeah, let me just reiterate, you know, that header issue is precisely why retiring the Bronig units when we did was, was a smart thing to do. That's a cost that would have otherwise been incurred by our customers, that the state has to decide whether or not they're going to, you know, invest that money, you know, for, for the RMR or not, but it's But it's just a reinforcement that we made, we made the right decision there.
Good afternoon, Richard Medina. I'll be covering for the summer preparedness for EDS, and this is both for electric and gas. And similar to PowerGen, you know, we always start with safety, making sure our crews are safe. We cover heat exhaustion. We cover backfeed just in case there's outages and customers are pushing power back to the grid and make sure our teams are working safely, then making sure our equipment and vehicles are ready. Then we also look at our inventory to make sure that we have proper inventory in case there's storms that come in, that we have adequate inventory for transformers and other equipment. And then we spend a lot of time on the operational pieces, and that's really looking at, you know, power flows on the transmission system, power flows on the distribution system, making sure that we have adequate capacity. And then, of course, all the reclosures that we've been installing assist if there's any outages, we can redirect power. Our System Operations Group, they do a lot of training just to make sure everybody's prepped. So you'll see there are a lot of ERCOT workshops and training that we do, internal training on Black Start and Load Shed, hurricane drills. So we work very closely with ERCOT, and they start some of their prep in March, and they continue through June. Then, of course, like Rudy mentioned, he's going to be certifying both our electric transmission, substation, and gas systems are all ready for the summer. This is a slide that kind of talks a lot about the reliability projects that Elena mentioned in the very beginning. And you can see there on the left-hand side, ERCOT issued a lot of transmission work to be built. And all that construction work on Number 1 and 2 is all new transmission systems to bring power from the south. All that was issued a few years ago. It's under construction, supposed to all be completed by summer of '27. And then last year, as ERCOT was doing load flow modeling, they're looking at Number 3 there, which is our Spruce to Prawnee line. And that one is the one that's designated a reliability risk. And so we did a lot of work to get some projects out. The board approved in March to accelerate that project with our contractor. And so related to that, we're also putting mobile generators at the request of ERCOT on the system, so our teams are working to install those. Next, I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Thank you, Richard. So another risk that we spent a lot of time preparing for is related to the wildfire preparedness. And it started with Richard and team going through and identifying the risky areas, using data from the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, identifying the assets, and then prioritizing them for inspection, and then also to help support management. We also conducted drone inspections. So alongside with the regular vegetation management that we did, we executed ground line inspections for wood poles and just making sure that we're continuing to do everything we can to be prepared. We also made sure that we were working together for communication. So we developed internal and external practices, and I'll talk about the external on the next slide. But we want to make sure that we are using all of our methods to communicate internally as well as work with our partners at the city, at the county, at the state, and other available resources so that we are all prepared. And then ultimately, we're looking for additional resources. So you see up there that we worked with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, TIDM, to apply for a grant. And that all comes together through a communication approach, making sure that we have as much information available for our customers. There you see an example of one of the wildfire messages that we put out. As Rudy said, we continue to get a lot of positive feedback from our community about the messages we send out for any pending weather, especially whenever it has to do with the risk of wildfire. We also, our teams worked together to put together a website for wildfire safety and mitigation. And one of the key partners that we collaborated with across the city, county, and other emergency services is PIOs, so make sure we're all consistent in our messaging and that we all have the right information so people feel prepared for what potentially can come. And along with our weather alerts, which is energy alerts that you can sign up for, most people know them as the weather messaging, we also have CAM. CAM we introduced last year to help us identify day by day what the conservation level is. So last week, we got to experience our first yellow day. Glad to say that so far this week, we're looking green. But CAM has helped continue that message, and we will continue all of our outreach opportunities with CAM. Last year, I think we were in about 400 locations sharing our conservation messages as well as being able to get a little over 8 million impressions just for the summer campaign to identify opportunities to save. And that's everywhere from the grocery stores to gas pumps and making sure that we do everything that we can to get that message out. And, you know, a lot of the other things that we do, it's not just about conservation. It's also about making sure that people know the status of their bill. And those My Alerts that I mentioned, they're not just for weather. We also have billing and payment alerts. But in addition to those alerts, we also have multiple touchpoints along the way to help connect with our customers. So all customers receive a bill, whether it be via mail or email. Majority of our customers do prefer to get their bill via email. And but we also have more. So before that payment's coming due, you can receive a text alert or an email alert or a phone call if you sign up for the My Alerts to say that you have a bill come due. If we don't receive that payment, then you'll, we will send a reminder through the mail, through a phone call, as well as via text and email to continue to say, hey, we know that there's an opportunity, you potentially missed your bill. We'll do your payment, contact us, and we can find solutions for you. We also do additional reminders and then a final disconnect notification. We've added another communication outreach of last text or email to say, to tell customers that their account is at risk of disconnection. And we really try to do everything that we can to prevent customers from being disconnected. And I do want to reemphasize, and I know we've talked about this in other summer presentations, but we do not take any action to disconnect an account for nonpayment before we run it through our terms and conditions. And that is consistent with PUC regulation. And just to be clear, that the circumstances that we do not disconnect service for nonpayment is during an emergency weather, extreme weather emergency. And that is defined as a, when, in the summer, for when the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory for either our county, Bear County, or one of the counties that we serve, so one of the surrounding counties that we serve. We don't disconnect on that day nor for two calendar days following the termination of that advisory. So our team works very closely with Brian to understand what weather that we are anticipating. It's a combination of heat index and temperatures whenever the National Weather Service will call a heat advisory. We do more than just waiting for customers to call. We take about 6,000 phone calls a day that we have an opportunity to interact with both our residential and commercial customers. And Dr. Romero took an opportunity to remind us today that we're 10 places every day, Monday through Sunday. And part of that is making sure that we're sharing all of the opportunities that we have. And it's not just internal, but it's external. And, you know, many times that we get questions about the, you offer stuff for commercial, you don't offer stuff for residential. Want to talk about, a lot of these up here you'll see are for residential. But we do have the Wi-Fi thermostat rebate program, which you will get an $85 rebate when you enroll your thermostat initially, and then $30 each year that you are enrolled. So whenever we do call for conservation based on CAM's color, we do ask that you participate, and then we will pay for that at the end of the season. But we also have rebates for central air conditioners, wind units, attic insulation, AC tune-ups, and general energy assessments. And all of that helps us support our community to reduce the strain on the grid as well as help keep the bills down as much as possible. But we don't stop there. We continue with having different billing programs, and you see a lot of them up here. But we do offer a senior citizen billing program, which gives customers additional time if you are on a fixed income. We do also offer disabled citizen, so anybody who's on any type of social security disability payment needs more time. Critical care customers also get more time and additional outreach. So we try and offer the right programs for the customers that have need. And then we also work with all of our amazing partners. We have over 200 partners. I know I've talked about them in the past and talked about our bundled care approach, but that's really what makes us unique. I know that whenever you're in need, it's never enough, but want to reassure you, we're doing more than any other utility is in this space. Most other utilities come to us to ask us how it is that we're able to have such amazing partners externally and internally and connect with customers. And it's just because we try and be as many places as we possibly can. And, you know, one thing I want to reassure you is, I know that we have had multiple customers that's visited prior board meetings. And so six, just wanted to close that loop and let you know that six of the customers that visited us at some of the prior meetings received bundled support, including weatherization, an affordability discount program, additional time to pay their bills. They got support from Bear County, DHS, and family services from the city. So that's just one example of the partnerships and how we help our community. Additionally, we did some in-home visits for a few of the customers who couldn't follow back up with us, so we wanted to make sure that we went out and reached to them. And that's our crew team. A lot of you see them usually whenever you walk in here on a board day or anytime you're at a community event, you'll see our crew members. But we also collaborated with our Opportunity Home partners, and now we have satellite office days at the Alizan, Apache, and Guadalupe locations. And the first one will be this Thursday. So in addition to what Dr. Romero shared, we have additional time that we're going to be connecting with those customers. We'll also go through knock-on doors, do door hangers in those communities for the accounts that are struggling the most so that we can do everything we can to help prevent disconnects. And ultimately, as you've heard all of our team members talk about, it really is a one-team approach. We have some photos here about safety, making sure that our crews and our teams are safe. We have a combined tailboard on the left that I think just about all of the teams plus more that you've heard today talk about. That's all of, all of our teams that they're working together to energize the SARS Resiliency location. And so very happy that we're continuing to work together, and it's taking a lot of effort, whether it's internally. Or on the far right, you see our customer assistance and all of the programs that we work with, all of the places we are externally. It takes one team both internally and externally. So with that, I will end the presentation. Rudy, would you like to add anything?
Well, I'm really proud of the work that we've done, starting to get these SARS Resiliency projects done. Pretty much, the entire organization has had to come together because that's an example where that, of what we're going to start seeing more of, generation on the distribution side of the business. And so we're implementing new procedures as we learn how that equipment is going to function, you know, kind of, you know, behind the meter, if you will. You know, and it's taken, you know, our generation divisions had to come in and apply some of their procedures to how we operate those units. We've got super technically, you know, capable people who've had to come in and make sure that our safety equipment is, you know, up to par and will protect our employees who have to work on that equipment, which is new. And even how we access the site and who has to be involved when we do those things. You know, all of this, it's a, it's a customer, you know, partnership that has led to significant one-team, you know, mindset thinking for us to get it right. And again, you know, we're trying to energize as many of those installations that are ready for SARS in advance of, you know, as we get into the summer. And there's a lot more work to do over probably the next year to two years to get all those installed. So I really appreciate all of the units who presented today. It's not, you know, it's not simple to prepare our system for the summer run season, especially as temperatures, you know, seem to be getting hotter as we, already in 100-degree days. The fact that we're as prepared as we are in this moment, I'm about to sign the attestations that are going to ERCOT, that we've done our jobs and are ready, and that happens because our team is focused. So to all of you in the room, thank you for the work that you do and for getting our plants ready and for getting our team members ready to, you know, to serve this summer.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you all. This is really comprehensive, and I appreciate your putting in the extra pieces this time about wildfire and the disconnections. I know we'll keep talking about that. I mean, this isn't simple either about how we deal with disconnections. And that last slide, I think, is really helpful, Slide 18, where you talk about all the community groups that you are working with, and I appreciate that. So let me see if anybody else has questions.
Comments if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you very much for that detailed presentation. I sincerely also appreciate the extra items, for example, the residential billing timeline example. So I don't want to go too much into detail because I believe we're going to add it to the next agenda. But again, as we prepare for summer months, we must again keep in mind and acknowledge the unique challenges that many individuals face, whether it's medical dependency, medical devices, low-income families and seniors, and of course, those that are very vulnerable with health-related risks. So we do acknowledge that. Again, these customers are often faced with barriers also to conserving, limited access to cooling options, and in some cases, life-threatening consequences during outages or service disruption. I do acknowledge and recognize that we follow PUC's protection. And so again, I want to thank the Chairwoman for adding this item in the future. I don't want to, again, this will be explored in our upcoming session. But I do want to see how we can, again, reevaluate how we use the bundle approach in CAM to expand the outreach and how potentially we could leverage AI, for example. Do we have to wait that long when we can analyze trends? A lot of what we know, not to stereotype, is a typical profile of an end user. And why is it that we cannot modernize outside of all this 24/7 onsite that we do? There's an opportunity, in my opinion, to modernize how we do that and we look at it. So again, I want to thank those who are here at the table that are going to revisit this item. I do believe that we're doing everything that we can, and there's always room for improvement. And so I look forward to the ongoing dialogue and how we can be ready for the summer outside of everything that we just heard today about resiliency. So on that note, I conclude, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Any questions over here?
So Mr. Alonso, can you come back for it? Thank you for your presentation, and it always peps us up when you talk. I guess that's your background on TV.
Yeah. You don't need any coffee. You don't need any coffee when I'm speaking.
If y'all would put up Slide 6, which is entitled "Preliminary Tropical and Temperature Predictions." And I paid close attention to what you said because I think we're more in agreement than I thought. But on the third bullet point at the bottom, it reads, "Number of 100-degree days are trending upward over the last three decades." And so I would ask people to look at that chart on the right, which sets forth the number of 100-degree days for the last three decades, beginning in 1994 and ending in 2024. And of course, that chart, it's not explicit, but it pertains to San Antonio, Bear County, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so you talked about an upward trend, and when I study the chart, I don't discern an upward trend. I see the number of days going up and down with no ascertainable pattern, and it fits in with what you said, which is that you characterize it not as an upward trend but as highly variable, and I think we agree. But you look at, like, we had 59 100-degree days in 2009, but then the next year, we had seven. We had 36 100-degree days in 2020, immediately followed by only three in 2021. We had 75 100-degree days in 2023, immediately followed by 27 in 2024. So, you know, you said highly variable. I'd say vacillating. But I'm troubled when you talk about an upward trend, only that I hope you can appreciate that people can seize on your upward trend characterization and think, yes, that's evidence of climate change, when perhaps these temperature fluctuations are just natural cycles.
Yes, and I'll be quite honest in it. I'll tell you, trustees, that if we were to look back past 1994, if you were to look at some of those records, you would hardly see very few 100-degree days. But ever since, you know, we started seeing more of the climate change going on, you're starting to see more triple-digit days that we're having to contend with here, not only in San Antonio, but across South Texas. And at the same time, we're also looking at more drought conditions. And as I mentioned, if we don't get really any rainfall, measurable, good rainfall on a regular basis, I mean, this is where it causes those temperatures to be increasing. And that's why sometimes we'll see those, you know, triple-digit days. But if we continue to see some rain, where you see some of those years where maybe one, two, three... two, three, you know, triple-digit days, we got some moisture in the soil, you know, it keeps those temperatures down just a little bit. So this is something that we have to look at even long-term, as far as what's going on, not only with the soil moisture, but our rain chances. And that's why I'm looking at this particular map that says, yeah, as we look at the past few decades, yeah, we're noticing a little bit more of an upward trend. Now, I did mention that there's high variability in the short term when we look at the past couple of years. But yes, for most part, yes, we're starting to see those a little bit more. But if you go back past 1994, you know, in those previous years, in the 80s, 70s, we didn't see that many triple-digit days.
Well, I think then maybe if it went back further, I could see that upward trend. But my point is, I don't see it in the last, you know, 30 years.
Well, we can address that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. And then please put up Slide 8, which is entitled Energy Supply Summer Resource Adequacy. And this would maybe be for Benny Etheridge or Richard Yerudia. I want to focus on the second bullet point that states, no unit outage is scheduled during June to September. And now if you'll put up Slide 10. This slide indicates that Bronic Unit 3 is in outage status right now and has been since March 2nd and won't be returned to service until mid-December. So is there a discrepancy there? Do you treat Bronic 3 differently than the other units?
Well, we do. We retired Bronic 3, and we're bringing it back based upon a contract with ERCOT. But we could have been more clear previously when we said, none of our operating units are in outage during the summer period.
Yeah, now that is an ERCOT unit. So it's an ERCOT unit that we operate. The only time it ever gets called upon is if ERCOT calls upon it, if it is available. And what we found in the work that we had to do to get it, you know, to make it viable, is that outage is extended to December or whenever it was because of the 26, you know, 28-week lead time. So that's not a unit that you'll see as part of our metrics going forward. That's an ERCOT-controlled unit now.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And then please return to Slide 8. And I'm focusing on that graph at the right that shows, for this summer, CPS Energy has 9,457 megawatts of resources available, and that's in blue. And on the right is shown the record peak demand of 5,860 megawatts, and that's in tan. So somebody might look at that and say, with 60% more megawatts than might conceivably be needed, we seem to be almost bulletproof. Mr. Garza, I'm asking you this. But isn't it possible for our customers to experience blackouts because of what happens across the state? And I think that might be helpful to elaborate on that for those listening to our meeting today.
So two things. I think that what you've seen so far is that because of the construction of solar and battery storage assets in the ERCOT market, you know, the risk has kind of gone down from fossil fuel generation that may or may not be available. So, you know, we've been, ERCOT hadn't had any emergency days because of those resources. Now, anything that happens that's considered an emergency across ERCOT will impact CPS Energy. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
People could feel like we're in good shape, but we're not an island here.
Well, we are in good shape, but we are not an island. That's right. So two things I want to say to answer your question. If ERCOT finds itself in emergency for any reason, we will have to respond, you know, with how, you know, we operate within that ERCOT region. If a transmission constraint develops south of, you know, we have a transmission constraint south of town, you know, when there's a lot of wind and the load is high, it could create some constraints on the transmission system. There could be localized outages to relieve that constraint while that, you know, constraint exists. And that happens periodically in West Texas, you know, east of Dallas-Fort Worth. There are areas where those constraints exist, but they only materialize under very specific conditions. And when that happens, you'll see us put messages out on why we're having to do maybe rotating outages within a small region to give ourselves some relief during that time. So ERCOT has an emergency, it impacts us too. There's a transmission constraint in our area, it could have an impact on our customers. Those are specific conditions. Overall, I feel really good about the position that we're in heading into the summer.
Yeah, you've done everything you can with things under your control, but my point is that people can't be complacent about that because things can happen at the state level that will impact us in terms of outages, correct? Yeah, okay. And then lastly, if you'd put up Slide 14, entitled Wildfire Preparedness, and this would be for you, Ms. Hardwood. In that last bullet point, I don't think you covered this. I paid attention to your presentation, but I don't think. You indicate we've applied for a Texas Division of Emergency Management grant. And how much have we applied for? And if we get it, how will the funds be used?
Yes, sir. I'm going to defer to Mr. Medina.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, similar to our DOE grant, this is a state grant that goes to the Department of Energy. And so last year, we applied for a wildfire grant to look at putting additional sensors on the 10 circuits that are within the northern part of town, and then also looking at cameras that can detect fires. And then those have alerts, and that's what we applied for. Right now, I think there's still some questions going back and forth, and then we're trying to figure out if the DOE is going to approve it. But it passed through the state and the state had issued.
How big of a grant was it, Richard? Can you answer that question?
I think it was 17 million. I got to double-check that.
The refundable, the reimbursement is 6 million. It was a total was about 17.
Yeah. The total was 17, and then refundable is 6 million. And then our portion would be, we're installing additional reclosers, inspections for drone inspections, checking all the poles, and stuff like that.
All right. And then just one last thing. As I looked at that map that you put up there, that next time you put it up there, maybe you could overlay our service area.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mackey? Anything? Okay. Trustee Gonzalez?
Sure. Again, thank you for all the presentations and for the great dialogue here. I did want to say that we're not here, in my opinion, to debate climate change. I'm here to talk about what we're experiencing, and we all know what that is, whether our weathermen or the nation's feedback at any valid magazine that you can read. We're experiencing longer heat waves, for some individuals, higher energy bills, and for both families and business owners, we're struggling to keep up. I can attest to that. Call it whatever you want, the reality, it's hitting households hard, especially those facing poverty, medical conditions, and unstable housing, and those businesses that are struggling to keep their doors open. Ignoring these trends, whether it's climate or poverty, is a luxury we cannot afford to ignore. This isn't about politics or extremes. It's about being honest about the challenges and being responsible stewards of our community health, safety, and future. We don't need to scream climate change to see the consequences, but pretending it's not happening, that's a disservice to every family and small business owner or large owner counting on us to lead with clarity and care. Thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree with that, and thank you, Brian. There is, of course, a difference between climate and weather, and that gets at changes. So any, Mayor?
Just, I'd like to get an opportunity just to highlight a couple of things that actually aren't part of the presentation, and I noticed were in the appendix. I don't know if somebody can do that for us. But they're really instructive, and I also was reading Sarah DiNatale's article this morning that talked about how we responded to the heat wave this last week. And I thought it was really instructive because what we've tried to do, obviously, within our affordability strategy and also just to stay reliable, is an all-of-the-above approach. We are adding quite a bit of renewables to our portfolio, but at the same time, obviously, trying to use the investments from, or try to use the revenue that we've received from being long on capacity by continuing to build up our portfolio ahead of time. But to illustrate the point, if you could go to the ERCOT market outlook, capacity and demand challenges, especially in light of some of the things that are happening in the legislature, just to look at the role of wind and solar, as well as the battery storage, that has kind of allowed us to have a little bit more. I think it's one before that. In our packet, it's Slide 33. Could you explain what we're seeing there?
So there are two graphs here on this slide. The graph on the left speaks to load formation, kind of how load occurs throughout a summer day, and what resources are typically providing generation during those periods. So I'll point out a couple of items on this graph that are really important. And then the graph to the right is the planning reserve margin. I mentioned sort of, you know, the increasing demand and supply that's increasing, but maybe not fast enough, and how that reserve margin is shrinking and going negative. So that's really what that graph is about. But the graph on the left really demonstrates, you know, a typical day. And so what this is showing is effectively, you know, what resources are generating when. So we do tend to see, kind of, early in the morning, we will see, you know, significant amounts of wind output. As the sun comes up, the yellow portion of this graph, you'll see solar production output go up considerably and actually be very helpful across our peak, our thermal peak. And then you'll see kind of a small contribution, but it's a huge contribution of storage in that small red section. Effectively, what's happening is, as solar ramps out, and that happens very quickly, we have over 20,000 megawatts of solar on the system and growing. And so a lot of people talk about how solar is unpredictable. It's very predictable. We know within a second when the sun sets. And so, yeah, it's very predictable. But as that ramp out occurs, you'll see a different set of resources that need to comment and address that gap. Storage is increasingly playing a significant part of shoring up the system during that solar ramp out. And as I mentioned, ERCOT's now planning to a net-peak load construct, which effectively backs out the resources in the evening that they know will roll off, such as solar, and look at effectively how much load needs to be mapped by the balancing resources. And so storage is playing a key component. Peaking units are also playing a key component. So resources that we can turn on quickly and turn off quickly help as prices lift when the solar ramps out to ensure reliability and continue to provide reliability across that 8:00 to 9:00 PM hour where the state is still very hot, but we have, you know, 20,000 fewer resources, 20,000 fewer megawatts of resources on the system.
Great. Thank you, Elena. And I brought that up because I thought the article was pretty illustrative of what you're talking about and how we faced that issue just last week. Whereas two years ago, it was an entirely different situation. We sent out ORNs alerts because we didn't have this kind of capacity on the ERCOT grid. We were already there, almost there. But essentially, the strategy is continue the all-of-the-above approach. And so if you can go now to Slide 38.
And as I'm going to the slide, if I can just make a shameless plug for, we need it all.
Right.
That reserve margin decline is real, and we need it all. I know there's some, a lot of different perspectives on different types of resources and pitting one against another. We need it all.
It's different in my, oh, no. This is it. So if you could explain that one.
Yes. This is one of the views of information that go into ERCOT's planning for available resources and supply. They get inputs from transmission service providers across the state. We are one of the transmission service providers, effectively looking at how much load is the transmission service provider expecting to see. Additionally, ERCOT has asked the TSPs to provide a lot more fidelity into data centers and large growth in particular. So you'll see data center growth in gray, crypto, which is a type of data center, in green, and then our industrial hydrogen, and then the oil and gas growth. So, you know, this is the growth that we're facing. This is actually a chart that has been adjusted by ERCOT down based on, you know, an expectation around timing of generation resources to be able to support interconnection of these resources, as well as just getting better load forecast accuracy, in particular around data centers. So the numbers that I touched on in my opening remarks indicated, you know, next, this summer, being equivalent to the 85 gigs of our all-time peak with a path to the year 2030 of about 138. So this is much more overstated because this graph does not discount some of the components and realities that ERCOT believes are at play. But even with that, moving from 85 gigs to 138 gigs is unlike any growth that our market has ever seen.
And the light blue bar at the bottom that grows slightly but not a whole lot?
Yes. You can kind of think of the blue bar as those of us who live and work in the state and going about our normal activities, and then your normal kind of residential growth, not looking at some of these larger economic drivers.
And so Trustee Steen made the point that, you know, that we're doing what we can here at CPS with respect to load growth. And this is a graph with some adjustments probably of a Texas challenge with respect to the growth of data centers largely. And that's not a CPS challenge, it's a Texas challenge, but any problem that they have is our problem too. And so I'm reflecting on some of the comments we heard this morning. And so if I would make a suggestion, is that we need to learn how to communicate this better and also challenge our lawmakers about this graph as well. Because the frustration from residents is that as we have tried to make investments with their hard-earned money that they send to us in rates, and we've had to obviously make adjustments based on capacity, based on maintenance, and the cost index going up for everything that we do, we've got to figure out a way to buffer residents who are ratepayers of this organization from the insane amount of growth that's happening in the data centers. They're not really job providers, but they're, I mean, they're bringing investment, but it's shaped, and our ability to work with them is shaped by Texas law. We don't have a right necessarily to discriminate. We don't have a right to create our own rates for those kinds of businesses within bounds. But we've got to figure out a way to communicate that to ratepayers, and we've also got to figure out a way to advocate to our lawmakers about changing that formula so the ratepayers of Texas aren't stuck with the bill that data centers are providing to no benefit of the people that live here. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again for that. I will just mention 49% right now, wind and solar in the state, which is actually low for this time of day. We are going to take some pictures before we go into executive session, but if you want to go ahead and read that language now and badges off for the pictures.
Following the pictures, the Board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, personnel matters under Section 551.074, and to deliberate vote or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the Board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It is 3:10 PM. We're going to take pictures and then go into executive session. It is 3:10 p.m. We're going to take pictures and then go into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. It is 4:01 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
You need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So move.